It's Monday, January 20th at 6:30 PM. Call to order this, call this meeting to order. The regular monthly meeting of the Board of Directors of the Fairfield Community School District to be held at 6:30 PM on the third Monday of each month. The meeting is open to the public and the public is encouraged to attend. Time is provided in the meeting for public input. The mission of the Fairfield Community School Board of Directors is one Fairfield where relationships foster growth, protect learners, unlock individual potential, serve every student every day. Roll call please.
Mark Porter, Ty Ward, absent, Kristi Kessel,
Here.
Megan Dell-Robins,
Here.
Mark Thornton,
Here.
Debra Williamson,
Here.
Dave Eastburn.
Here.
All right. Do we have any perfections, perfections to the agenda?
No, I have none.
Uh, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So.
Kristi and Porter? Any discussion, I guess, same, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, so we're gonna start off with focus on learning and we have a presentation from our middle school principal Carly Martin.
We'll let John get our presentation up here. All right, so just a few updates from the middle school here, um, so far this year, um. Yep, once John's ready. Okay. So. I gotta figure out how to use, oh. I don't know if I can move it forward while you're on Zoom, John. Just go ahead and dink at me.
Deb, we're gonna stop sharing from Zoom.
Tell her I'll share with her so she can see it on her own device.
They'll be able to see it with the way I'm gonna do it.
Okay.
All right, Deb, can you see that? Can you see it, Deb? She can see that.
Are you there, Deb?
Yeah, I'm here. Did you ask me something?
Can you see it?
Can you see the slide?
I, I could see it before, now I can't.
Okay, give me one second here. How was that?
Yeah, I can see it now.
Okay, perfect. So, um, just a couple of updates from us this year. We have, um, a couple of goal areas that we're tracking, one of which be that we have a hundred percent of our middle school students connected to a trusted adult by the end of the year. Um, that really connects to our, our, the board goal of belonging and student connectedness. So, um, we're tracking that through a couple of different measures, one being our student connection survey, which we take, uh, three times a year. We took our first one in the fall. Um, and then we also have staff track their own feelings of personal connections to students because, um, unfortunately with the legislation changes in the past couple of years, it's harder to have, um, some of our students participate in surveys since we have to have families opt in. So we wanna make sure that we're tracking all students, even if they aren't able to take the survey. So sometimes we, um, we'll just check in with staff and say, hey, who feels like they have a connection with this student if we feel like they're struggling. So, um, this fall when we took our student connection survey, we had two hundred and thirty-seven students participate. Um, again, that number wasn't where we wanted it to be, um, because of not as many, um, families opting in as we would have liked. And so, um, we do have data from that, but, and I'll talk about this in a minute, we are working on getting more families to, um, opt in and participate as we move throughout the year. So of those two hundred and thirty-seven students, we had eighty-nine point five percent share that they felt safe at school. Um, eighty-four point nine percent felt that students or adults treat students with respect. And then eighty-two point seven feel they have a trusted adult at school. Um, but what's interesting about that is we had ninety point eight percent list an adult that they would talk to if they needed something. So even though only eighty-two point seven percent of them said, hey, I have a trusted adult, ninety percent could say, this is who I would go and speak to if there was a problem, which is higher, which is obviously a positive. Um, these numbers are higher than our, um, data from the spring, which we had from our, um, conditions for learning survey. So it's good to see that increase. But again, after we looked at the data, really the feedback from staff was, this isn't meaningful until we have a higher percentage of our kids taking it. Um, and so what we spent part of our January sixth PD doing was, um, just contacting families and saying, hey, if you haven't opted in, we would really love for you to consider doing that. Uh, and we've had a lot higher rate of, um, our families opting in through that and saying, oh, I guess I didn't really know what it was or didn't understand or thought maybe it was something different. So, um, we've been able to connect through a lot, with a lot of families through that and look forward to our spring update with that as well. For the next slide, John. Our other goal area is, um, a hundred percent of our students growing in math and reading. Um, of course, that again aligns with what the district is setting as a goal, um, through the board as well. And so we have, um, a few different ways that we're tracking that. We use our FAST assessments, MAP assessments, um, ISAS data at the end of the year. And then we also track some data through our LIFT interventions, which is like our MTSS at the end of the day. So, John, if you could go to our next slide. We have some current data here. Um, we just last week finished up our fluency testing on FAST for fifth and sixth graders. That's only tested through sixth grade. So we have some updated, um, percentages there for proficiency. For fifth grade CBMR, which is our fluency testing, went from sixty-one point three four percent proficient to sixty-two point zero seven uh, percent proficient. So we had a few more kiddos go, um, up to proficient. We went from thirty-seven to fifty-five students above the spring benchmark. So right now fifty-five of our fifth grade students have already surpassed that spring expectation for fluency. Um, we had nine students who did not show growth out of the fifth grade class. So as of right now, we're showing ninety-two percent growth. So, uh, while it's not a hundred percent, we're certainly working toward that and looking at what's not working maybe for those nine kids and what we need to do for them to get them to that growth. In the fall, um, when we assessed a reading, which, um, looks at comprehension for reading for fifth graders, we were at fifty-eight, fifty-five point eight percent proficient. And then for math, we were at fifty-eight point five percent. So we will do, um, our next round of math and science testing this week. And with the delay, we'll push back reading testing till next week. So we're not doing that on a delay day. So we'll have updated scores, um, next week. Sixth grade proficiency, um, from fall to this, um, past week in winter, went from fifty-nine point three eight percent to sixty-seven point seven eight percent proficient. Uh, so we went from thirty-three to forty-eight students above spring benchmark there. And only four of our students did not make growth, which is ninety-five point five percent. Um, so a lot to celebrate in that number for sure. Um, we're pretty excited every time we would bring kids back into classrooms and say, wow, all of these kids grew by double digits, or all of these kids went from not being proficient to proficient or above. So, um, a lot of celebration in the building last week as we were working through that. Fall scores for reading comprehension, sixty-four point six percent. Math was really not where we wanted it to be, twenty-two point four percent, and science at sixty-seven percent. So, uh, we've spent a lot of time, um, this first half of the year really focusing on those math and reading interventions and making sure that we are, again, tracking those students and that we're making growth from that twenty-two point four percent especially, but in all of them for sure. John, there we go, thank you. Seventh grade, um, we started out the year for reading at sixty-eight percent, math at forty-seven point five, and science at sixty-five. And then eighth grade, um, reading was at fifty-three point eight percent, math again lower than what we would want, thirty-six point six percent, and science at fifty-nine percent. So with all of these, we're really looking for that a hundred percent growth. Um, even if not all of our students make it to benchmark yet, we wanna make sure that all of them are growing and getting closer to that. So excited to dig into those numbers here in the next week and see what other shifts we need to make for our kiddos. And then just some other highlights for the year to share. Uh, we had, in the past two weeks, we've had choir and band concerts for our sixth through eighth grade students, um, which were really, really nice to see our kids up on stage performing. Our seventh and eighth graders this fall, um, went on business tours through our Leader in Me program and were able to, um, connect with business leaders throughout the community, which was a good way for them to get out and about and see some of the different things that we do right here in town that they may not necessarily know about. Uh, we have had science field days at both Lake Darling and Jefferson County parks. Our eighth graders actually got to have a little bit different of experience this year and go to Lake Darling, uh, since they go to Jefferson County Park through many of their years. Uh, we wanted to give them a little bit different of an experience there and they really enjoyed that. A few of them even caught some fish while they were there, which was exciting. And then this year, we've also, um, incorporated Student of the Month and Principals Award Assemblies Monthly, which has really been exciting because those students who are receiving those awards, um, were able to invite their parents and include them in, as part of that. And we've had a really nice turnout to those. A lot of parents come and join us. Um, and then also, it's really cool to watch one of our leadership classes totally set up, tear down, um, be greeters for the parents who are coming in, be ushers for our students. They're running the show. Um, and we have students who lead the assemblies as well. So it's really about students, celebrating students, um, and inviting our families to be in for those as well, which is really special. And then of course, our annual talent show, um, I know Mark got to come and enjoy that with us. Lots of talented kids in our building. So it was really cool to see, um, them showcase that. I think that talent show has been going maybe for longer than I've been alive. It's been going a long time. So it's cool that we get to, um, continue that tradition and showcase our kids and some staff too. So, that's what I've got for you. Any questions or anything for me?
The only question I had was, back to the math. I saw in the fifth grade, it was called AMATH, and then after that goes to MAP Math?
Right.
Is there a difference?
Yes. So AMATH is through FAST Bridge, which is the same thing that we assess, like reading on. Um, and then MAP is a separate platform that we use for sixth through eighth grade math and science. Um, I like the data that comes from MAP. It breaks it down a lot more and a lot further for us than, um, like FAST does. Um, so we like to use that for those to see, um, a little bit more in-depth information of what skills our kids are missing.
Yeah, so there's interesting the percentages, but you don't know class by class, but it was interesting that the MAP was much lower than the AMATH.
Right.
But it's hard to tell if it's kids or data or what that is.
Right. And that's, yeah, I would say like MAP is adaptive. So as students get questions correct, it gets harder. Um, so that may have something to do with it, but we also track cohort data from year to year to make sure that they're showing that growth regardless of the test too. So, yeah.
The kids that didn't show growth, is it safe to assume that they were also not at the proficient level?
Not all of them. Um, some of them who were already proficient, maybe, you know, slid back a couple of points, um, or stayed the same. And so we did have a few that that applied to. So again, still looking at those to say, okay, you're proficient, but we still need to show growth. What, what other extensions do we need for those students too?
This is probably too green, but with the governor's address the other day about her ideas for math, have you guys looked, or has anything been communicated down with that? What do you actually look like?
I haven't seen anything.
To know?
Nope. Nothing's been communicated yet, other than it's just gonna be sim- similar to the literacy expectations. So I can see a personalized mathematics plan for any student that's not proficient. I mean, that's what I would see happening, but no details yet.
Which fits well into our stats, cuz math seems like it was.
Yep, it's been traditionally lower than reading, which is generally the case statewide.
Do you, I know this isn't part of your report, so you may not know the number, but I'm just curious how many kids are participating in at least one activity through the year? Is that?
We are tracking that. We have a hundred percent connected to either a leadership job within the building or, um, an activity outside of school. So, yep. So that's part of the connectedness too, making sure they have something at school to call their own and feel connected to.
There's a, one other question just around the, the new homework policy. Um, I'm just curious how it was established for each grade to have a different, um, sort of policy around?
Sure. Yeah, we really, we wanted teachers to have some ownership over what was manageable for them as a team, um, because their reality is a little bit different. Um, and as kids get older, some of what they need and their supports are a little bit, um, different as well. So just wanted to have, um, that buy-in and that teacher ability to help create some of that as well. Um, I would like to see some of it move a little bit more to be aligned in time. Um, but right now, we just need to make sure that kids are being held accountable for doing their work. Um, and some, some student ownership for that too.
Do you anticipate to start the school year with that sort of program in place next year?
Yes, yep. Um, sixth grade really started that work, um, last year. And so they started the school year with that this year. Um, and we've seen a lot of success with that, a lot of fewer students with missing assignments. And so we'll roll that out, we'll keep those moving, um, and hopefully see that progress into the other grade levels as well.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right. Um, up next, we have our board committee updates. So we'll have our committee chairs provide a two to three minute update on what we've been working on. We'll start with finance. Dave Eastburn?
Okay, thank you, Megan. So our finance committee, uh, met at eight AM on Monday, January thirteenth. Uh, we reviewed the draft audit, went through, uh, the audit itself and its findings. Uh, we approved the draft by consensus, which, uh, you'll get a, a report from Evan tonight. Um, it projected for us that we did in fact, um, correct our issues with internal controls. And we had no material inaccuracies in our financial reports. So, um, the findings that were there were rather minor and were, were, uh, are able to be corrected. Um, and I think that the result of the audit is that we can have, high confidence in our financial statements and our, the financial position of the district and how we account for funds for our taxpayers, our students, and our teachers. So I wanna also thank Evan and Zach for their hard work to get us to this position and to get us to this, uh, position for an audit. We reviewed, uh, the contingency funding plan for the district that was developed, um, based upon, uh, the district having a relatively low net days cash on hand last summer. We felt it was important to have a contingency plan in place so that we could manage our cash. But also, if we did get to a point where we needed to cover cash shortfalls in the general fund, we could borrow from these categorical funds, establish an interest rate, but also not spend a lot of time, because time would be precious in those situations. So we covered that contingency plan. We reviewed it and we passed, we approved it by, uh, um, consensus. So we have a contingency plan in place. It is our intent to, um, have a tabletop exercise once a year going forward into next year so that we could, um, exercise that plan and make sure it was in place and that we could use it in times of stress. We reviewed the budget and the budget timeline. We reviewed the, the recommendations that were gonna be presented tonight. And we did approve that by consensus. And that will be covered later on in our meeting tonight. And then lastly, we covered the, uh, the assumptions that we were going to be using for the, uh, financial bond for a new middle school, if we decide to go that direction. We thought that the modest assumption of thirty-nine point six million dollars plus, uh, save capacity of twenty-four, twenty point four million dollars would be sufficient for a hundred and ten thousand square foot building with increased construction costs, approximately three hundred to three hundred and eighty-six dollars per square foot. Um, and we approved some of the assumptions on cash that would be avoided so that we could test that to make sure that, um, it was the most viable option and feasible option as opposed to a renovation. So we, we did that work, are in that work. And, um, we do feel that a, uh, that the, the district, it would be in the district's best interests to, to go with a new, a new bond issue and a new building at those numbers. And we also looked at the interest rates and we agreed that a band of interest rates, uh, four point one five to four point five percent would be used for all of our, uh, work to test those assumptions. Those would be our cost of capital. So we, we did do that and we approved that by consensus. And I think more, more to come on that issue as we, we go forward. So that's my report.
Thank you, Dave. Uh, Human Resources Negotiations Committee, Mark, are you presenting on this since Kristi was out?
Yeah, I can.
Either, I don't know, that was my assumption, but if I'm incorrect, okay.
Sure. Um, we've had several meetings with the Salary Schedule Joint Committee, um, just kinda reviewing that and trying to look at the, um, the salary, uh, I'm blanking right now, the schedule. And so trying to think outside the box with some of the creativity of how to set that for going forward. Um, I think there's another one towards the end of this month. I think again, we're gonna meet with them. Um, so just some good creative, uh, thoughts flowing on that to see how we can, uh, come together and find a plan for a long-term goal. So we can get some, um, expectations long-term versus always having fluctuation every year. And so I think those will continue to go. Those are mainly ones that we had so far.
I, since Ty is out tonight, I will speak on strategic planning. Um, so primarily we, we reviewed the ideas from our work session on enrollment and teacher recruitment and, um, retention and in terms of how we wanna get, you know, what marketing we want to pursue. And we came up with a plan to have Donovan work with us on two spotlight videos. The first, um, to focus on Washington School and, um, kindergarten, preschool kindergarten enrollment for next year. And then the second video would focus on the middle school and, um, the importance of extracurricular participation and a hundred percent, uh, participation. So we can hit two schools, um, and, uh, and sort of showcase those, um, with Donovan's help. We also spoke about, um, I think from our ideas, you know, from the last work session, we decided we were gonna continue to work on, um, reviewing potential benefits for new and existing teachers that we might not have in place. Um, and also if we can reach out to current high school students and college students that are pursuing an education track and kinda connect them with a recruiting strategy. Beyond that, um, we, uh, we, we talked about the bond and next steps with FEH, uh, who has, uh, drafted a survey that will be sent out to stakeholders, um, kind of as a follow-up tool. So we can get some insight on, you know, why people voted how they did on the bond and just hopefully we can use that feedback to inform our process forward. Um, and, uh, you know, we also discussed kind of what a roadmap would look like for re-engaging stakeholders. Um, and we'll get to that, I guess, later this spring. Um, I think that's about it from, from the Strategic Planning Committee. Mark, do you wanna speak on policy?
Yeah, so we met, uh, earlier this month and we have gone through, we had a probably more policies to review this month than we had passed. We're trying to catch up on some that we need to just go through and either redo or look over and just, uh, um, approve their review. So you'll see a lot of the two hundreds in there for today. Um, and we also discussed the cell phone policy. Um, it's kinda been a big topic. Obviously the governor touched on that a little bit as well. Um, so we're looking to, looking at that here very soon, um, and bring something forward, uh, whether we, yeah, we'll come up with our own, but then we'll also make sure that if the governor comes out with something, we're meeting that as well. So, um, that's to come here real soon. A matter of how you deal with the instructional time versus all day, some things like that. So we'll, uh, look around. We've brought up, I think there were three or four with Iowa Cities, Ames. I think there was one, maybe Ankeny, I can't remember, that we looked at. Uh, just kinda reviewing those to see how we can pull and choose from those to make it our own. Um, and then along that, we also brought up some of the discussion of like laptop usage as well. So kind of along those, all electronics, how can we, uh, draw something up that will make sure that their laptop usage is useful for education purposes? I think that was it.
Great, thank you.
Facilities also.
Oh, sorry. I hopped over you. You were at the top of my page, which was hidden. Sorry, Mark. I knew we were missing something.
Ah, you're good, you're good. Um, so, uh, we met in Facilities Committee a couple of weeks ago, myself, Debra, uh, Zach, Evan, and we had, uh, one guest. Um, we had a, one of the solar contractors in southeast Iowa kinda visit with us, not the one that actually presented this one, but we were, kinda started discussing the applicability of possibly putting a solar system on either high school or Penns Elementary. Um, kind of after a variety of discussion, we started to kinda lean towards maybe we should start exploring the possibility of putting a solar system on Pence this coming summer. Um, we have some preliminary estimates of what the cost would be on that and as well the cost savings on that. Um, right now, um, I think last year, which I've heard a few different numbers come out on this, but we're thinking that last year, we spent somewhere in the vicinity of around eighty-six thousand last year, I believe it was. Is that right, Megan? Eighty-six thousand last year, uh, at Pence on our electric bill with, uh, expected, uh, rate increases With uh, expected uh, rate increases from Alliant. We're thinking that's gonna be closer to ninety five thousand the upcoming year. So we did actually have Ideal Energy uh, put together some preliminary estimates for us at this time. And we're looking at several different things. Um, if you kind of look at this, there's a variety of things. Uh, if we did just a. Main building roof estimate, uh, pretty much that's just utilizing the roof space at Pence. We're, we're thinking that we could potentially save as much as thirty eight thousand dollars the first year. That would be a, with a hundred and sixty eight K W system and right now they're estimating that cost at two hundred ninety six thousand. If we did a rough northwest ground, um, that'd be a two hundred and seventy four K W. Um, the estimated cost on that would be around forty, four hundred eighty two thousand. The estimated first year savings would be sixty five thousand four hundred. And then they ran an estimate if we'd run a hundred percent electric offset. Now, one thing we want to be diligent on. Um, we're not sure if we can size it that big because we're simply not sure if we have the ground space or the roof space to do that. So. These are all kind of preliminary. Um, that would be kind of, you know, out of pocket. We're thinking if it ends up being. Just a straight out of pocket purchase, we'd probably be looking at a ten to fifteen year payback if we can start to pursue looking at some grants. Or uh, some tax credits or not tax credits, but uh, uh, some federal state incentives. Um, basically, we think we can maybe get that cost down to a five or ten uh, year payback. So. The big thing to note right here is, you know, at this point in time, we really don't think uh. We should probably figure out with any credits coming or any grants or credits coming into play at this point in time, but we're gonna pursue all of that before making a final decisions. Well, of course, you know, make sure all avenues there have been explored. So that's kind of the gist of it. Um. But like I said, this is something that we're thinking about pursuing this upcoming year. The two biggest reasons that we're thinking about that is, uh, first of all. It helped kind of protect and hedge against our long-term energy costs, but then also it would also allow us to move as much as potentially sixty five thousand dollars of current expense out of the general fund. To the Pebble Fund, which would essentially be a, a teacher's years worth of savings, right? So. Just with some of the budget uh, things that we are doing right now, um, it would allow us to basically switch that expense from the general fund to the Pebble or Save Fund. So that was the first big thing there. We also discussed all the capital improvements for twenty five, twenty six. Um, and you guys will see all that there. The big things that we want to note on there is obviously the solar system, you know, that's, you know, projected a million dollars, but right now with what we're currently looking at that, you know, it'd probably be a little bit less than that, but that's what we're projecting on that end. Um, the other thing would be the, the drop ceiling and the lights at the high school gen or at the high school. That's a four hundred thousand dollar project, you know, probably have to have a good discussion about that, you know, if that's definitely something that we want to do there now. Um, our facilities directors kind of look at that as a way to kind of, you know, A, there should be some energy savings there, but that's probably not gonna justify the expense there, but it's more just. You know, kind of brightening the high school up and making it a little bit more inviting. Um, I have a lot of mixed opinions on it, but I'd love to get you guys' take on that. And of course, we are gonna be voting on learning to push that through. Now, do bear in mind that this is not the first time they've tried to bring it to us. We have already knocked this down before. Uh, the primary reason we knocked it down before is because we wanted to see what was gonna happen with the bond. Of course, that failed. So we just have to kind of make sure that, you know, a good chunk of our upcoming year's budget, we want to put towards that four hundred thousand dollars for that project if we want to do it. So. We can discuss that at that point in time. And then we'd also just talked about the budget estimate for twenty five, twenty six. Um, right now, if we did approve everything that we're currently projecting right now, I think that would. And correct me if I'm wrong, Evan, but that would be about one point seven, eight million and right now we have about two point one million allocated for the upcoming years. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So that'd leave us about four hundred thousand dollars for play there um, for other things that might come up. So. But of course, that four hundred thousand dollars on that roof project that we have to decide on tonight is gonna play a big role in that. So. That's something that Josh has been bringing to us here for a number of months. Um, but it's something that he'd like to do. He thinks the way that we can really brighten up that high school, make it a more inviting space for the kids. Um, so on and so forth. I personally have a lot of mixed opinions on it, but I welcome any and all comments on it. We can decide on a vote here later on in the meeting, so.
Kevin, a question.
Yeah.
What's the useful life on the uh, solar project on the solar?
That would be an ideal question, but I think it should be forty years. It used to be.
Years.
On the panels, yeah.
Is it a war, is it warranted? How long is the warranty?
We'll have to check on that, but I'm assuming there should be at least a five or ten year one or.
I think they've provided a schedule too with some built-in maintenance. So there's like a. Right, what you call that kind of schedule that.
Is the payback less than the warranty or over the warranty?
It depends if we get the grants or not and the credits. So, so. Now, we were talking about the thirty percent credit. How did that work?
Thirty percent credit is uh, direct pay credit that became available through the um. What is it? The TAC? The Inflation Reduction Act.
Yep.
Of two thousand twenty-two. So I think this is, it's been in play for about a year. So it's a new, it, it allows um. Organizations like a school to, you know, not a taxpayer who's filing a tax return to get a credit. So we're allowed through forms to get thirty percent back. As like a direct payment from the government for. The purchase.
So if that was to come through, that could be as low as like a six-year payback, which would be tremendous for the district, especially for the long-term finances.
We're gonna cover this later on, so.
Yes.
So we're in business.
Yeah, and we're not making any official decision on the solar tonight. Now, the drop ceiling, yes, that is an official decision tonight, you know, if we say yes tonight, then they're going through it. Now, the solar, we have some time on that. What would we probably be looking at for, probably approving sometime in March or April? That be right?
Yeah, so I mean, the capital improvement plan approval tonight, whatever you guys decide, it seeks or gives us permission to go to bed.
Yes.
As quick as we get beds back, um, and then we. Probably start projects in the summer.
Yep. There's a different variety of ways that we can tackle the solar, but the, the biggest thing for us is just seeing the opportunity to lock in that energy cost because at Pence. You know, if we're looking at ninety five thousand, I mean, what was the total electric cost that we spent in the district last year?
Almost half a million.
So basically half a million dollars. So this would be a first step towards, you know, improving that over time. You start out with a small building. See how it goes and then we go from there. The other reason we talked about Pence is that there's a lot less meters there. Did we decide that there was like twelve meters that the high school runs off of, I think it was?
Yep.
So it was a lot more complicated and the way that the usage works there is a lot more complicated. Pence was a little bit more simpler. Easier way to get started, but to fully offset it, we don't know if we actually have the ground space and the roof space there without, you know, impeding, you know. The playground space and the space that the kids run in there. So that will have to figure out, but if you actually look at this map. In here, um, or this printout, I don't think it actually showed it, but.
Didn't have it on.
Yeah, it didn't have it on there, but basically it was the roof and then back by the parking lot, there'd be some ground mounts back there. And that would kind of, I think essentially get us to the roof northwest, which would be a cost of four hundred eighty two thousand, but it'd save us sixty five thou, sixty five thousand dollars. First year out and that's the current rates. But the biggest thing with that is, is just locking in your long-term cost, you know. You know, that protects you against any rate increases for forty years. So. While initially, initially, we'll absolutely see the savings in the general fund, but. Long-term, it's gonna be, it'd be tremendous for the district, so.
Thank you.
Alright, so let's move on to uh, approval of the consent agenda, agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dave and Mark Porter? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Did you guys want to speak?
Okay. Okay, so next up we have public participation. And I'm gonna read. The spiel. Not gonna read the spiel. Okay, we have no public participation tonight. So we'll move along to new business. Uh, seven point one, do I hear a motion to set a public hearing for the fiscal year twenty six and fiscal year twenty seven school calendar?
So motion to set a public hearing on February seventeenth, twenty.
Sorry, do you have to read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, let me get this up. The whole notice of public hearing I need to read?
No, so the motion.
Just the motion?
Yeah, it's below.
I lost it. Hold on a second. Click out of this. Okay, do I hear a motion to set a public hearing on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-five for the proposed fiscal year twenty-six and fiscal year twenty-seven school calendars?
So moved, second.
Porter and Thornton. Any discussion?
I'll send this out to all of our stakeholders in the February update as drafts and if they have questions, comments, concerns. Um, we'll take those back to our labor management team as well to kind of walk through um, tweaks if need be. Um, also had a couple of conversations with um, getting feedback specifically on moving from, you know, two o'clock to one thirty um. With some of our businesses to see if that's a, a burden that um, has been, has been heavy. I haven't heard that from too many people so far, but. I think it'd be warranted to, to get that feedback as well, so.
And the goal is to set this next year and the following year and then next year, we'd approve another calendar.
The twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So we're always gonna be approving two years out.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, seven point two, do I hear a motion to approve? The reduction in force resolution as presented? Christie?
Second.
And Porter? Okay, any discussion on? This recommendation?
So exactly how does this work?
From uh, how do we?
Well, I mean.
Backfill?
Well, not that, I'm just, are we, are we, I mean, we're not actually, I mean, what are we approving right now? This is my question.
So yeah, the classified staff, you can see Washington Elementary Secretary, Penns Elementary Secretary, District Tech Secretary, and the certified staff, there's one, two, three, four, five.
So we have, we are actually approving all those cuts tonight, incorrect?
Correct, and then we would walk through the process of how that actually plays out.
Yep.
Prior to March fourteenth is what we've communicated with our. Employees. I would just like to, to, to make sure people understand with the instrumental music, that point six position that isn't going to be reducing. The number of students that are being served. We're still gonna have a five, twelve band program.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, seven point three. Sorry, I have an error in my. Diligent. Do I hear a motion to approve board policies at the first reading with no changes? So moved. Christie and Mark Thornton. Any discussion on these? There's no change, so. Just keeping the same. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Right, so additionally. Board policies for review. Sorry, I'm a little clunky with when things pop up on my screen after motions. Do I hear a motion to approve board policies at the first reading with changes?
Second.
Mark Thornton and Dave Eastburn. Any discussion? So again, these are just, most of these just changing in accordance to I S V. Language. On the Code of Ethics, we're just swapping one of their suggestions in for what we had in place.
Just a little less cumbersome.
Yeah, less cumbersome, a little more straightforward.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven point four, this, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the? The fiscal year audit as presented. This approval acknowledges that school officials were compliant with board policy and present, presented the audit to the board of directors.
So moved.
Second.
Dave and Porter? Any additional discussion on the audit?
Sure you guys want to learn a little bit about it. They've told me to give you guys a little updates, so. Um, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. So this is for that FY twenty-four audit, so this is year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, so the first thing I wanted to highlight, um, and most of what I'm highlighting is on page sixty-six, sixty-seven in the book. And after tonight's approval, it will be on the website for the public to view as well as along with the auditor's, along with auditor's website.
Sixty-six and sixty-seven?
Sixty-six and sixty-seven. So different from previous audits, the first thing I wanted to highlight is under part one, B. So we had no material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting or disclosed by the audit of the financial statements. So in other words, all of our financial reporting had no weaknesses or no material weaknesses at this time. Um, for that FY twenty-four year. D, there was also no material weaknesses in internal control over the major programs were disclosed by the audit of the financial statements. So within the program itself, when we were paying bills, there was no material or lapse in internal controls over our major. Programs, so that's SAVE, PEPL, nutrition and so forth onward. So that's way different from previous years. But I would be lying to say there's not always room for improvement. So let's talk with the two findings that happened. The first one was. We actually undercounted our certified enrollment. So the state actually owes us money for two kids. So how do we get that money back for two kids that they didn't count that we should have? After tonight's approval, this goes to the auditor of the state, which goes to Department of Education, which goes to Department of Management. So we'll see on this year's budget cycle. Two additional F T E of one-time money to be spread out over a ten-month period to recoup that funding that we should have had for. This fiscal year. So that's gonna amount to about fifteen thousand dollars. Or fifteen hundred bucks a month over the next ten months or that FY twenty-six school year to get that money back. So. We undercounted kids. Um. I will always take a funding to get more money than to lose money. But we also need to verify that we are certifying our enrollment accurately as well, but that's a pretty common finding. Uh, these ratings have changed throughout the year as well. Um, the second finding we had is expenditures for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four exceeded certified budget amounts in the other expenditure function. So if you go back to the financial report, if you look over the financial report at the bottom of key measures, there's four areas that they measure for the certified budget. Instruction, support, services, other and. Um, such as supplies line. So our overall certified budget in general fund was not overspent. We actually underspent. But that particular section of other, we overspent. What comes in other, that's open enrollment, that's concurrent enrollment, that is. There's multiple other things that fall under that. I mean, it's the big overall arching thing, so. What kind of happened there on the why we overspent the other is, um, before the law changed, uh, we can open enrollment anytime. It was really hard to track for budget purposes. Open enrollment in and out to make the amendments quick enough. So as we know, every amendment cycle for a budget requires us to bring a public hearing to the board. We set the public hearing, we listened to the public hearing, we proposed a new budget, we amend the budget, then we re-present it. Uh, so we were slightly over on that other category. That being said, with the new key measures that we adopted and that how we're reporting this year, we clearly see where we're under and over this year already. So I do plan on. Bringing amended budget to you guys. In the March board meeting, uh, to hopefully address that earlier. So that is one proactive approach we have taken. Um, so those are the two findings last year. Um. I was pretty pleased, not that we had findings, but I was pretty pleased with where we've come over your time period. The other area that we're working diligently to improve on is our fixed assets. So we depreciate a bunch of expenses. Throughout the year and last year, if you remember, all of our items in the district that are twenty-five hundred or more had to get depreciated. January of last year, we changed that policy and we weren't able to get all those disposed of or depreciated out by the time of the audit. Uh, to the new limit of five thousand because we just had so many technology devices that are in the fixed asset schedule. So we're working diligently. To update that depreciation. Um, module, um, which should lower our liability expenses, which should help our key ratios. Um, but I do remind you, those key ratios that those depreciation expenses tie to, we're all in the green, so we're, we're just gonna get better. With that, so that's one area that we are looking, working on cleaning up at this moment. So those are the big highlights from the audit. There's a lot of good information in here. Always open for questions. Um, it'll be on the website tomorrow morning. But I'm open for any questions.
So the adjustment that had to be made to our general fund, is that noted somewhere in here? What page?
Uh, are you talking about the downward audit adjustment?
That was.
That was for FY twenty-three.
That was the previous, previous fiscal year.
Okay, so you don't have to acknowledge that in the year it was taken?
So there is a little note in there that states that all prior year adjustments were made in accordance to, so they did indicate that I made the adjustment. So there is a little note in there that states that all prior year adjustments were made in accordance to, so they did indicate that I made the adjustment.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, so we have a motion to approve. Um, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven point five. Do I hear a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six capital improvement plan directing school officials to seek bids? Porter and Eastburn. And let's have any discussion?
So this is just basically giving you permission to seek bids, we're not actually approving any of this stuff at this point in time, correct?
Correct, so we're approving the plan, nine dollars at this moment.
I just, what is the bathrooms at Washington, what does that, what kind of work is that?
Yeah, so we walked around some of the buildings, um, a team of us, and we noticed there's just some cosmetic things that need to be completed. The bathrooms, you know, some chipping tile, maybe some paint, some light fixtures, missing ceiling tiles.
Replacement.
Doors on the. Stalls.
Okay, that's a refresh.
Now, Evan, I forgot to ask you when I called you earlier today, but all the instruments that was on the original list, is that no longer on this, or?
So that actually, so the list of instruments is just for me to track what the, um, music department would like to purchase.
Yep.
But that actually falls under the summary of recurring CTE slash music budget, I just needed a place to put those, so I knew what to order for them.
Understand, okay.
Yes, my only question is we have the three buildings on here, but still begs the question of what we're doing with the middle school, so I know it's a bigger question, but. I guess I'll just pose the big one, it's hard for me to get on board with buying a million dollars of the solar panels when we have nothing in here at least for. Doing something with middle school, even to keep it going. Whatever we decide on the bond, good, bad, or otherwise, we still have three, four years, we gotta keep that building functional. So I guess.
Yeah, and this is just twenty-five, twenty-six, so it's just one year, um, we do have things on there if the bond doesn't pass, if that's. The route we're going, which from our November meeting, I think that's what was communicated, um, but I understand what you're saying.
And that four hundred thousand dollar cushion that we talked about, I think that's a lot of what we have in the back of our head, where that potentially gonna go.
Could go.
Unexpected costs and unexpected costs are likely gonna go to the middle school at this point.
Yep, there's definitely some things that, um. Wiley and I have talked about, um, but a lot of it doesn't fall above or within the bid threshold, um, so some things he was talking about was just ripping off some sheetrock, put on new sheetrock. Mold, mildew, whatever mitigation, some of those areas, tile flooring, some of those areas. Passive project on that.
But the key to note about this is this is capital improvements, and obviously we wanna be careful doing straight capital improvements to a building that might get tore down in five years, so.
How often do we have to resurface the high school gym floor?
Yeah, probably every ten, twelve years to like really strip it down, sand it down to nothing and repaint, re-line, do all of that. It's happened one times, I know since Mr. Courtwright's been our activities director, um, but you really should do something every year from like a. A coverage, um, standpoint, yeah. But this is a full-blown, down to nothing, repaint, fresh.
Now, if we decide not to go through with the solar project at Pence, does that mean we would still do the roofs at Pence, or we hold off on that until the time period in which we would maybe do that, or just later?
So initially, this twenty-five, twenty-six plan had high school roofing, couple of sections in there. Um, but what we decided was to move out the high school roofing to twenty-six, twenty-seven, and move in the Pence roofing.
Because it couples with the solar potentially.
Um, so we would have to.
So if that got moved out, we'd probably do both the roof at the middle school and the roof at Pence, if we decided not to go solar. We'd have enough.
Key thing note, the solar is we're just researching at this point, so. And the two big reasons we're all gonna do that is just getting that cost controlled, first of all, and then also having the ability to get that cost out of the general fund, which is. An easy cut to make on like next year, the following year, much more easier if things maintain.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's either benefit, I just, I don't know.
But I think your point.
Walk through the middle school and say like, sorry, bond and pass this, you're waiting another two years, and we'll get back to you to figure out what we're gonna do.
We could also create kind of a contingency capital improvement. With the middle school included. Now, would that mean the solar project's still there and this is gonna be in addition to, like, we're gonna spend two or three hundred thousand dollars on some things? If the bond doesn't pass next year, we could come up with something like that, so we have both, you know, in. If it doesn't.
And maybe it's just a matter of understanding, but again, we have, that's probably a different discussion for. The bond and what's gonna happen there, I just think there's gotta be something to keep that thing going.
I mean, there's maintenance still happening, so we'll have maintenance.
Like even little things that can brighten somebody's day, that may, I mean, you have in here ten thousand dollars for wa- for bathrooms at Washington. And so it's like, yeah, we're gonna dump a bunch of money into bathrooms at the middle school, but you've been in those, those are pretty trash right now.
Yep.
And so like, those are things students use every day, so how can we at least keep them going? So that way, people who leave Pence with all these things going on, go to the middle school and feel like they've gone to a dungeon.
Yeah, so maybe that contingency plan of some kind, at least some items.
That has a few capital improvements connected to the middle school. In the.
At least we've identified what we can do.
Yeah, it's doable.
And the solar one for a million, is that just estimating if we wanted to go the whole thing if it does get approved, or?
That was a big number, I think we put on there before we even got the estimate back from ideal.
So we met a facilities committee, I don't know.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, and we got a bunch of stuff back after this agenda was published, so. The high school was originally where we started, and that was almost, I don't know.
One point one?
One.
Is it more than that?
One point nine, I think, I think anywhere.
Point oh nine, point oh nine.
We gotta come up with an estimate of a half or something like that, so.
Yeah, the, I, I believe that Pence, the, the rate with a line is actually more expensive than the rate at the high school, because the high school's on a. More commercial rate, like a, a cheaper rate, basically, so. When we looked also at the bill. In twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, it was sixty-six thousand dollars, and then just in the fiscal year. Or the calendar year twenty twenty-four, it was up to eighty-six thousand dollars, so this is a cost that is escalating. You know, everybody is feeling that across, you know.
And then they're projecting to go to ninety-six thousand.
With just the same usage, but just rates increasing, so, and, you know, because it comes out of the general fund. You know, whether it's a.
Do they have LED lights in that school currently, do you know?
Um, some, so I know every time we replace. Lights, we're replacing with LED, but Josh was telling me that there's something with like the ballast to make sure they withstand it, so they don't burn out at the same rate.
Yep.
So he wanna do it on the road, or like as we go, if not, it's gonna be a really, really big.
Yep.
Initial expense.
The other thought, and just tie levels, we get further into this on the solar panels. Is the space over there, so if you start going off of the, the roofs onto those areas. Like, there's hardly any place for those kids to run out anyway.
Well, well, that's, that's why right now they currently have it drawn up to go in the green space over on the other side of the parking lot, which is not, that's just currently just unutilized space, right? Where they go.
To the west.
It's over by the parking lot there.
Yeah, I think we'd have to look at some creative options as time we could maybe, I mean, I just, I don't know, that, that's down the road if we get there.
Yeah, I would bring it up to further discussion down once we get further into.
I don't think that's a utilized space there currently, is it?
Well, we may have to get creative on utilized space eventually, but things that we're adding, but, yes.
So Mark, what is the timeframe, so we're able to move sixty-five thousand dollars for the solar project? Year one?
Well, if you offset, if you offset all the expense in year one, then you have that much more money in your general fund.
And then ninety-six thousand is when?
Well, ninety-six thousand is the expected cost for next year, so if we were gonna size it to offset a hundred percent of the expense, that would be the savings. We're probably not gonna size it that big, for case in point, we don't know where we're gonna put it at, if we were to size it that big. So.
Got it, thanks.
We'd probably size it at that sixty-five percent point, if we wanna be right in that cherry spot, I guess, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, so with these capital improvements, will we receive estimates back on all of these items, or just some of the larger ones, how does it work from this point?
Everything above twenty-five thousand for sure requires.
Multiple bids.
Multi-big bid process, um, but everything on here, yeah, so everything twenty-five thousand above, you will definitely see back at this table with multiple bids. Um, that's more of a sealed bid process, um, in regards to. Um, like thirty-five hundred dollars in gutters, you'll probably see that on a board bill, that's below the ten thousand dollar mark, um.
But like the gym floor, we've already contacted some people to let them know, hey, this may be something, because if we wanted to get it done this summer, we're. It's right there, like it may end up being next spring break, if we don't get on somebody's schedule this summer, because it takes at least a week, so. Or it should take about a week.
Fully predict a big facility thing in February, in March, to prove a lot of bids, just so we're walking through those.
Deborah, do you have anything, or any, any questions, I know you're. Not visible, but just wanted to check in with you.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 um. I feel strongly about the, uh, approving of the plan that we put forward. Um, especially with regard to the exploring the solar for Pence. Um, I think it's a strong point to, uh, free those funds in the general fund. Uh, that could be, that could go towards a teacher's salary. Um, and I agree with Mark about the. Uh, freezing our, um. Uh, cost for our electricity going forward, and we know that it's gonna continue to go up. Um, and I believe that the, um. Upgrade to the high school, the hallways having the, uh, the drop ceiling and the improved lights. That's not necessarily a, um, energy savings, but I think it's gonna be a. Very valuable improvement to the high school, the high school is just dark and. Kind of depressing in the hallway, and I've had a lot of feedback from the public when I, when I bring this up. Um, you know, like, oh yeah, you go in the hallway and it's like the lights aren't even on, so. I think that's gonna be a very important, uh, although it sounds expensive, I think it's gonna have a very positive impact to. Everyone who goes to school and works at the high school.
I would just like to say on the solar project, the thing that, that we need to be careful of. Is that we have to have an accurate, if we're gonna use, uh, a payback analysis. It, it shouldn't go over the warranty period, in other words, the, the project should pay for itself within the warranty period of the solar.
I mean, like I said, I'm not sure how this is gonna work, it used to be that there was different components as a part of the system that had different warranties. Some of it would have like a five-year warranty, some would have a ten-year warranty. Back when I was a little bit more involved in this type of stuff, usually we were able to get those paybacks less than that, but there isn't gonna probably be as many incentives for us as. For the school as what there was then, because most of those incentives were tax-driven, and that doesn't apply to a school because we're a tax-exempt entity, so. So, I don't a hundred percent know if we'll be able to get that done or not, I think that would be. Big, because if, if, if it was just a straight out-of-pocket expense, it'd probably be more than ten years, which that I don't like, you know? What I like is if we can get some of the stuff that Megan was talking about and get that payback down to somewhere in that five to ten-year range, and she's talking about possibly six years, but. All that's yet to be seen, a lot of stars have to align to get it that short, but in six years, essentially, you don't have electric costs or other that makes to your system. If you offset a hundred percent of it, but we probably won't size it that, quite that big at this point in time, so.
Okay.
Can always add to it later.
Okay.
There's also potential to include the roof with the project and apply for the same direct tax, uh, thirty percent credit on that. Alright, um, I think we discussed, any, anything else before we? Vote, all in favor of approving the capital. Improvement five-year plan? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, um, do I hear a motion to approve the contract for the light and ceiling construction manager as presented?
Second.
Mark and, Mark and Mark?
M and M.
Alright, um. So, let's see, discussion on this, sounds like we wanna have some discussion.
So, if you guys kind of remind, this is something that Josh has been talking to us for a number of months. Um, I think when he brought it to us, as, at least on the facilities, I don't, I don't even know if we had a facilities committee yet, but I think it was, you know, a couple of months before the bond issue, he said, let's just wait and see what happens with the bond. And see if there's any dire things that we need to have done at the middle school, that's kinda where I'm at, but I still haven't heard of anything dire that has to get done there at the moment. But it is a big cost, it's something that Josh has wanted to do for a while, of course, I'd like to get the high schooler's opinion on some of the things that he's. Professing when it comes to this, but you know, they have a lot of opinions about, you know, trying to brighten it up, make it a little bit more inviting, comfortable space. Um, kinda retrofit it a little bit, it's expensive project, but they think it'll make it a, a better, more inviting building, a better environment for both teachers and students. Um, of course, me being kinda the practical guy, and that usually isn't quite enough when it comes to a four hundred thousand dollar project. But of course, I'd like to, if, if it's something that'll make the experience better for our students and our teachers, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open to it, I just wanna make sure all avenues have been. You know, uh, looked at when it comes to it, but I'd like to get your opinion on it.
Yeah, um, well, when I think about it, I, I don't know how much students will actually notice it, I mean. Maybe for the first year after it's put in, maybe they'll notice it, but when they say drop, when they say change lights, are they gonna change from like hologens to LEDs?
Yeah, so it'll make it more modern-looking is what it'll do, it'll drop the ceiling, it's gonna make it way brighter, um. I don't know, other than that, like what, what aesthetically it's gonna bring to, to you as students, I think you're probably right. You know, you, you'll recognize it and notice, wow, this is different, but after a year, so I don't know if that would be the same mindset.
Yeah.
You know, from kids.
Well, I mean, right now, it, it doesn't necessarily feel like bad in there and dead and all that, cause like there's stuff on the walls, there's, it's kinda colorful in there, so. That, that's my thoughts on it, kinda, it doesn't look awful the way it is now, but I'm, yeah, I don't think there'd be any reason to be against it.
If we were to vote it down, where would we anticipate we could use those funds otherwise, and one spot I obviously think of would obviously be the solar, you know? I mean, if, if I had to choose between the two, I would choose the solar before that, just because of the pure energy savings, but. Evan, I'd like to get your opinion on where else those funds could be used?
Um, I mean, we have a five-year plan, that there's a lot of things that we can move up, a lot of what I'd be curious about. I'd have to talk to Wiley a little bit, um, just because of timing, because there's always a ton of roofs that need done at the high school.
Yep.
But I don't know if we can do Pence roofs and high school roofs, just by contractor availability in the summer, um. We have some fire doors that we wanna do at Pence, um, just update, they have wooden doors in the hallways, maybe some fire doors there. Um. There's a lot of things on this list, carpet, there's some paving, fencing, um. Some things that we didn't place into specific areas, there's a ton of different athletic stuff, there's some technology stuff, there's some. Um, food service stuff they're working on that they would like to see as well.
It would just be going back to that master list that we created and moving things up, that's what it would be.
I'd like to see, hear some of the other board members' opinion on it, Christie?
Um, I guess I'm a little torn, like you, um, I mean, if, if. It really is going to dramatically change the experience for the kids, I'm all for it, um. But yeah, it does seem like a lot, a lot of money to invest in. Something that I don't really know, I don't really understand what the. Outcome is gonna be, I guess.
Well, I know that we, that, uh, Mr. Wiley took Megan and I around in the building. And, uh, the ceilings are noticeably deteriorating, noticeable, I, I don't see this as a cosmetic thing at all. Um, particularly on the basement floor. It's, you, you can see where the ceiling is deteriorating, something needs to be done. And, yes, it, it would improve the cosmetic experience, I mean, nobody wants to go into a deteriorating. Environment, it depresses everybody, but. But he showed us some, some definite spots. That this is more, to me, after what I saw, and I'm not. You know, you're, I, my job at home is to hold the flashlight, it's not to repair things, so. But, so I'm relying on him, but Megan saw with us. This is more than a cosmetic project. And so I'm, I'm all in favor of keeping it within a five-year plan. We had it in our plan. And I think, I think it, it, we should get this done at the high school. Um, we're gonna be living with this building for a long, long time. And I'd like to see money go into the buildings that we know we're gonna have instead of a building that we may be tearing down. So that's my opinion. I, it's more than a cosmetic thing, particularly in certain spots.
Mark, you have an opinion?
Me, I was there just today, and I specifically looked at that with this coming on the board, and. I mean, you go in there and you, and you notice it, so it's like we've put all this money into it, we did all the walls, it makes it, it makes it look nice and clean. And then you look up and it's just water stains and half the tiles are falling down. And so I think. You look at the plan, it would give it more brightness in there, so I think if you did look around, it would drop that ceiling, so it's gonna make it shorter. Just gonna make it, if you have it all white and it's shorter, it's gonna make it feel more. I don't know, spacious and new than it is if it's what it is now. Is it an absolute ness, then necessity? No. So if somebody said, we have a leak that, or a roof that's gonna leak, that's gonna ruin all these, these ceiling tiles, yeah, we should go spend on that. Um, but I think, as we continue to work on these projects, we need to make sure we continue to finish them. Because if we only do half of it, it still looks kind of. Half-done, so if you never finish it, you're still not getting the. I guess fix of what we're trying to do.
Megan? Yeah, I think at first, when this first came up, I was a little reluctant to spend that much money. Going on the tour definitely made me feel like, yeah, I, I can see why this needs to be attended to. I, you know, I was like, well, do the science classrooms have everything they need? Like, do we need, like, you know, is there any other place we can spend money in classrooms? That would improve student success or student experience? But it seems like those things, you know, I think, I think Josh said something about the science rooms just recently having an upgrade. I don't know.
They were part of the addition, so all those.
They're, yeah, and if you go in the addition, right, there, the drop ceiling is there, so, you know, you can feel the difference between, I believe, right? The drop ceilings in that area, so you can feel the difference. So, you know, if we have these funds, you know. I think at some point you have to use them on things like this, you know, we, we can only replace so many roofs. Always, that always feels better because we know that's, you know, it seems like a critical thing, but at some point, I think. This is, this is part of creating, you know, a positive experience at school for, for kids and for staff. And parents coming in, you know? So, yeah, it's unfortunately just, it comes with a price tag, that's. Big, yeah.
One, one thing we could consider is doing the drop ceilings in phases over. Um, multiple years, and, and it wouldn't feel quite so painful. Um, and if we did that, then we might be able to work on sections of the, the high school roof at the same time. And what do you guys think?
Would that work good with the engineering firm? Probably not.
No, because now we're in a couple contracts, so that means we're going to multiple bids, so every year we'll be rebidding. The same project, and if someone else gets a bid, now they're trying to figure out the plans of the old. Construction manager, uh.
That would not be a similar idea.
And I know, going back to the little solar conversation, we did start with the high school, so we do one roof, and then also we're like, let's do solar at the high school. This was the best thing we ever did. Well, now we've already just replaced the roof, now we're kind of ripping it up to, um, just. Doesn't all tie together well. And I'd say, I mean, I don't understand the phasing, wouldn't understand the phasing approach based where the money's at right now, I'd be comfortable with.
We have the funds as far as, yeah, that's.
And four hundred thousand unobligated at this moment.
Is this one still valid? I mean, it seems like kind of an old quote, so is it, did they say that there was still?
Yeah, we touched base with Chris, yeah. So I put it in at the high end, so.
So what we're approving now is an agreement to have a construction manager.
Yep, so this would be hiring Carly Nelson to, um, be our construction manager on the project, and he would go out and start seeking bids. Uh, for the contractors, subcontractors.
So how much are we paying them to do their part of the?
Breaking it up. Into the contract here.
This is thirty-five thousand, I think, is, uh, and then there's some additional costs.
I'm just curious what all that, you know, that thirty-five thousand.
Of the project as well, I believe.
I'm just curious what all that entails or what all they do to earn that forty thousand. I'm sure it's.
Thirty thousand, six seventy-eight, and there's a ten percent, is that right?
Something like ten percent of the cost of the project.
But essentially they design it and.
So this would be in-house architects.
Yeah.
And manage? Do they do all the managing?
Yeah, we do all the managing, so he'll be the guy that will essentially be paying. Carly Nelson to pay the contractor, kind of like what we've done with, um.
So we would just pay them a gross amount and then they would divvy it out, whoever does the work then?
It depends on the bids come back, but, yeah.
And how often do we use a project man, like?
So anything above a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars by law, I have to use a project manager.
Okay.
Um, well, that track, we have to have an engineer. The easiest way to get an engineer is to go through a construction manager who has them on.
Staff.
Have, yeah, staff. And Chris is an engineer by trade, so.
Okay.
So anything above more than thirty-nine thousand, we should have an engineer.
And this is the, looking at the. Architectural design, there's the three levels in the middle, right? Basically the U-shape. And obviously the basement floor has that one kind of at the library. Right?
Yeah, I'm not sure what it's like right by the library, but.
Yeah, it kind of cuts through between.
I don't know if that was updated at all.
I, I think it's.
It's in here.
It's shown on here as yellow, so I assume that that was. But everything else is not touched, because it's either new or.
Just the yellow.
It's just the yellow.
Mark, do you feel like you understand the compensation on a?
After that conversation, Mark, do you have any other thoughts from yourself?
No, I mean, I think you guys all made your opinions pretty clear on it. You know, the biggest thing for me is just. Um, that much money and just, you know, that much taxpayer money going to something like that, you know, it's just obviously. You know, I, I would love to get the opinion of more teachers and students to really think if they, it's needed, it had, would have that much of an effect, but. Um, I think overall it's gonna make the experience better for the, the, uh, teachers and kids. They've had to work pretty hard for it, and usually these high-dollar items, that's kind of been my cause to make sure that the district has to work pretty hard for it to, uh, win our approval and. I think that they have, and I think it will be an all right project for the high school. So I think we've, we've been telling them no for five months now, and if we're gonna tell them yes, we gotta do it now, if it's gonna happen this summer, right, so. So.
Right. Anything else? So we have a motion to approve the contract for the light and ceiling construction manager as presented on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that's the end of new business, superintendent updates?
Yeah, just wanna highlight, um, quick summary of the governor's condition of the state. I'd shared this with you, I think. Um, a little bit earlier this week, but just wanted to, to share this as well publicly. Um, so right now the governor's proposing two percent, uh, SSA. Um, continuing the fourteen million proposed budget for support staff pay. Um, looking at a bill that would restrict cellphone use during instructional time at the state level. Obviously, we've had discussions around a local policy, um, that we would set at the board table, um, that would be implemented in the building. So that'll be something over the next couple of months, like Mark already alluded to. Um, a math, math counts bill, again, similar to literacy, um, in regards to how that's rolled out, haven't seen any details there. Um, potentially a bill that requires a civics test for graduation. I think that's been out there before and it usually dies pretty quick, but, um, it's there. Teach Iowa returns, which is, um, currently coupled with Power School users, and so people that use Power School for their SIS as opposed to. Infinite Campus can just post jobs to Teach Iowa, which, which is where everybody goes or used to go, and now they brought it back because everyone was so mad that it wasn't. There for a couple of years, and so they brought it back, but now since we're ramping a campus, we have to spend two hundred and fifty dollars. Per posting if we wanna put it on Teach Iowa. Um, so we're figuring, we're trying to figure out how that, how can we not have to pay that, but. I'm, I'm hopeful if there's a, a bill connected to this, then there isn't gonna be a fee for us, but I don't know that for sure. Um, risk pool for out-of-state placement costs, so this would be something where if we have a student that we aren't able to serve. Whether it's through an IEP process or otherwise, goes to a, a facility that, um, is residential, out of state. Then there would be a, a risk, um, pool that we could use, um, and I think we could use management funds to pay for that. As well if, if need be. Um. Along fifty thousand dollars for retiree, retirees receiving hypers, that's the same as it has been. I don't think that's any different. Um, another big one was, um, this childcare partnership, transportation assistance, um, expanding, um. STOs for, for pre-K, so again, depending on where that goes, that could be something that impacts us, uh, down the road as well. So those are some updates, um, from that. We'll see what bills actually look like as they come up. I usually get an update every week from, his name's Dave Doughton, um, he's the kind of legislative, um, correspondent for SAI, School Administrators of Iowa. Um, in the works right now is a substitute recruiting dinner. This will be mid-February. We're gonna host, um, a dinner for teachers who have maybe retired and aren't doing anything. Um, to see maybe if they'd have an interest in coming back, showcase some of the, um, the work that we're doing and how, um, we need more subs. So, um, Dave's been working on that, um, Evan and I will kind of be the, the ones that are there as well, um, helping lead that, that dinner. Our literacy task force met again, um, earlier, I guess not this week, but late last week. Um, right now, the, the task at hand, K eight, is really defining our current reality. Um, you know, what standards have we prioritized? How are we meeting those? What time in, in interventions are we using? Uh, buildings are gathering all of this to come back together so we can share that, so we all hear at the table what is currently happening. So as we continue to make decisions, um, everybody's on the same page. We're gonna have an AEA services, uh, contract meeting for twenty-five, twenty-six. It's actually tomorrow. So myself, um, Evan, building principals that can make it, we're gonna be meeting with, um, associate director there. To look at next year and how, how those funds could be utilized based on our current priorities and maybe what we're thinking about next year. Uh, wanted to highlight quick the Washington principal hire timeline. Um, obviously, one of the, um, personnel, um, pieces that you approved was, was Tina's, um. Retirement, just wanna wish her well as, as she moves on, um, to spend more time with her grand, grandkid. Um, but we will be ga, ga, gaining feedback or getting feedback from, uh, from parents. From staff members at Washington, from staff members in the district, similar to how we did with the high school principal search last spring. To create a profile for our next leader. Um, I'll also, uh, just open up meetings to anybody from Washington that wants to meet with me specifically around. What traits or characteristics they're looking for. Uh, the position will be posted tomorrow, um, will run for probably about a month. Um, we'll have that survey open for our stakeholders until the fourteenth of February, then we'll create that, that profile, and as we start screening. Um, Evan and I will have a good sense of what we're looking for, um, moving forward. The goal then would be to, to have onsite interviews during the week of March third. With an announcement by March seventh, if things go the wa, the way that we want, we have a good candidate pool. Um, is currently just finishing up an application for our own online school. Um, and again, this is something that's super intense, but it would be contracting services with a company called Edmentum. Um, through which they use a platform called Edoptions Academy, and we would then be able to keep. Or at least hopefully retain the majority of families that wanna open the roll out of our district to a, a online school in a, another district. So we currently have over twenty that are doing that. We wouldn't be the ones facilitating the teaching or the feedback. Through Edoptions Academy, they've got licensed Iowa teachers that are doing that work. We more so just have to get the information from them and house it. So, um, that's something that I think we, we should be able to get approved. Haven't identified who's gonna kind of oversee that quite yet. Already talked about FEH, so I don't really need to hit that one. Just, again, the March, uh, meeting, we're moving from the seventeenth to the tenth. We're only gonna have the one meeting. We won't have a work session for sure in March, and we haven't really decided if we are gonna do a work session yet in February, but. I think right now the structure with committee seems to be going pretty well. Um, and so it'll be kind of a, if, as needed, um, moving forward, so. That's all I've got.
Um, one quick note, March twenty-fourth, we might have to put in a special meeting for Monday.
Oh, yeah, that's right, March twenty-fourth, potentially, yeah.
Yeah, because you can't do a different public hearing before the twentieth of March now, so. It's kind of hard.
Um, how many subs do we currently have, Zach? You're talking about the, uh, recruiting subs. That's kind of a question I get on the regular. I do not have an answer for it.
Yeah, I'll tell you in a second.
I mean, in general, are we able to fill our substitute needs, or are we having to do a lot of shifting in the buildings?
No, we have to shift pretty substantially every, every time.
Because I've been hearing that quite regularly, there's a lot of shifting going on, especially now that sickness is going around aggressively.
I just sent that list to you, didn't I, Dave?
You did, I'm, I'll, let me see if I can get it.
So I'm looking for.
Is there ways that we can?
We're inviting those people.
Is there, is there ways that we can soften the requirements to get substitute teachers? Just to have an adult there, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we don't want an incapable person, but it really isn't that hard to solve, I mean, from a certification standpoint.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, are you required to have the same certification as a normal teacher or?
No, 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 no.
Just a high, uh, college degree, I believe, and then you go through.
At the secondary level, at the lower levels, you don't have to have a college degree. I wanna say it's like thirty, but I wanna fi, I wanna find this specifically too.
In general, are all thirty of those used every day or? No.
Um, looks like I have.
There's two different tabs.
Yeah. There's some in blue that I don't know whether you wanted to include that or not.
No, don't include those.
Okay, well, just gonna take a, a little math. There's, there's substantial number of, of them.
People.
People.
Yeah, it's where they're not there.
What we're trying to do is, is get a, a commitment to be in the pool to stabilize these.
Mm-hmm.
And to get their preferences to where they are gonna teach.
Mm-hmm.
And also to invite. You know, qualified retired teachers to come off the sideline and be in that pool.
Thirty that we've had so far this year, some, thirty-one.
Okay.
And then the, we haven't had yet worked this year, there's another seventeen that are in our pool, so it's close to fifty people, total.
Okay.
We're, we're getting ready to send out invitations, uh, at the end of the, end of the month, but you guys, we have to wait on Zach and Ev. And Evan to really approve that.
Do, some of those do we share with other districts then too, or?
I'm sure some of them do, but we don't, we're not in like a consortium at all, so we don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. What did you say?
I was gonna ask about, um, the Washington, whoever we hire as the Washington principal, will they be able to kind of loop into the literacy task force? Progress or how, I, I mean.
Yeah, if they can, from, uh.
Because it seems like they would be kind of.
Time standpoint, we won't, we'll communicate, hey, we'd love you to be a part of this, but if they can't, based on their current reality and what their responsibilities are. That'll be okay, but yes, ideally. Because along with that position, we're going to have an additional stipend for curriculum oversight development. Um, kind of like we do right now with special education and our Pence, um, elementary principal.
One question on the sub thing, and not to beat a dead horse, but. It's, you're identifying basically retired teachers that are still around.
Correct.
And then is there open opportunity for others, like community members that we may know, we can pass it away to say they may have.
Absolutely.
An intention.
Yeah, we can continue to recruit, but we're just sending out invitations to the, to those people to get a preliminary stable pool.
Okay.
Of teachers that we know are, have, have spent time in the classroom and have. Are qualified. Are qualified.
Might be good to publicize what the requirements are for others if we need further. So that people know, like, oh, I could do this.
Yes. Absolutely.
Maybe if this doesn't give you the pool that you need, we can have Donovan create a little.
And even then, even if it does give the pool.
Yeah.
We, you know, the more the merrier in this situation.
Because sometimes just that page, you know, just a Facebook ad is not enough to like. If people see someone they know doing it in a little video, I feel like it's a little more relatable, oh yeah, I could do that. Alright, any, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Highlights.
I guess I may go.
The best part of the.
Wait a minute, we gotta.
I gotta get better with. Finding this cold, I apologize, alright, let's move into highlights, so we'll start with Dave.
Okay, thank you, Madam President, um, I think my highlight was, I, I thought we had a, a, a really good finance committee meeting. Um, and covered a lot of ground, I'm, I'm very pleased with. Um, I can't say enough about how much work has gone into getting the district. To a position that we can have confidence in our financial report. And that's very, very, very important. Be- because, um, we, we not only can show how we are stewards of taxpayer funds. But also that affects our teachers, our students, our administrators and those kind of things to make qualified decisions. I like the, uh, I'm pleased that we were able to get through the budget reductions this year. And Zach did a really good job in communicating those. Um, those are basically based upon just natural enrollment. And hopefully that'll, we'll get to a point with our, our, uh, financial targets where we, we can stabilize that as well. And we're on track to, uh, to, to get our, our unspent authorized. As budget ratios and our solvency ratios at the end of the year, based upon these and the work that they've done, but, um. This year's audit went much, much better, and I, I really commend Zach and Evan and the work that they did. So I was pleased with that and I, I enjoy doing the finance work for the finance committee, and I think that, uh. We're on track to try to take another run of the bondage, so.
Great, thanks.
That was my highlight.
Thank you, Dave.
I tried to string it out so that Evan would win.
Um, Deborah, would you like to share a highlight?
Oh, sure, I will, you know, I really appreciate the ki- committee structure that we've started, it, uh, it feels like, um. Um, I don't know if I'm imagining this, but it feels like we're, we're getting into the, the details, uh, uh. And, and sort of feeling a little more momentum and traction as a result. Um, I'm very pleased that we've, uh, voted yes on the, the ceiling. Um, the drop ceiling project for the high school, I, I hope that that does, uh, show that we're, uh, paying attention. Uh, to, to how the building feels and that we're not just letting it, we're not just leaving things to, to fall apart. That's it.
Thanks, Deborah. Christie?
Uh, my highlight for this meeting is, uh, Mark Porter for having these printouts for the info on the Penn's solar panels. They were very clear and easy to read and to have a physical thing that I could look at, but the solar panels.
I didn't prepare those, but thanks.
Um, Mark Porter?
Uh, I'll piggyback off of Deb's, I think this, trying to figure out these committees is working well, I think we're getting more traction. With the committees, so everybody can kind of dive into the different sections, so I think we still have some tweaks to do to make sure. We all have the communication we need to let that momentum and move everything else faster. So I think that's a good step, I think that's helping us prepare the long-term vision, which I think is what we're, we're all. On the same page of, get that long-term vision, then we can figure out on how to execute either.
Um, I think it's always good to hear from, um, administrators on how things are going, you know, at the building levels. Um, clearly, we still have, you know, a lot of work to do around our scores, um. It'll be interesting to see, you know, what the governor comes out with as far as what her new, um, requirements are, but, um. Yeah, just always good to, you know, feel like you're in touch with what's happening at the buildings, so.
Thanks, Mark.
I think my highlight was just kind of the meeting all, all the way around, you know, I feel like that, uh, I feel like maybe the meetings are getting more organized, which I really appreciate. Um, I do, I agree, I really wasn't real excited about the committee structure, just because I didn't wanna have that many more meetings, but what I will say is I feel like that, uh. Um, we're getting a lot more, better information fast from individual board members, so I'm kind of starting to like it a little bit, so. I hope that we can move forward with that, um, it, I think so far it's going right, well, I think we're, uh, getting into the weeds. A little bit more without being invasive, you know, on the superintendent, I kind of like that a little bit, and I think we're all getting a little bit better understanding of what we're voting on, so I think that really helps out a lot. And, uh, obviously it's always good whenever, you know, the, a principal will come in and kind of share with us with the progress that they're making, so on and so forth, so. Um, yeah, I really enjoyed the meeting all the way around.
Great, yeah, I echo everyone else said, but really hearing from Carly, I think, was the highlight, to see that there is some. Measurable growth in terms of, um, that hundred percent growth, um, I think it was the fifth graders or maybe the fifth and sixth graders. That saw the ninety percent, uh, each one of them, or ninety percent. Ninety-two and ninety-five percent did see some growth in, what if that first measure was reading of some kind? Reading fluency. So I, I'm glad we're measuring that and that we're seeing it, and it's coming back to the meeting midterm, and then we're gonna see it again at the end of the year, so I feel like. That, that's, um, you know, that's what we, that's all we can do, I guess, from these seats, is kind of ask for that data and, and to see what's, what's happening with it. Um, in regular intervals. Anyway, thank you all, now. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Christie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.